Good morning. We have a lot of enthusiasm in here. We're so grateful to have another opportunity. We are grateful to be able to see another day, and we are certainly appreciative of everyone being here. I am calling the meeting to order. It is nine o'clock according to our clerk. And Western Union call every morning for the correct time. So we thank you for keeping us on point. So with that, at this time, I'd like to call on Steve Pace to lead us with the invocation. If we can stand and remain standing, and our truly Councilman Bailey will lead us with the pledge.
On this traditional all-seeing today, let us be thankful for the fellowship of all the community that we share. Let us pray. Through our pause today, recognize that we are blessed to be your children, that you look upon us as fathers to all. We lift up each other, our entire community, as children of God, and pray that we might see each other as brothers and sisters, the least of these along with the greatest of these, and hand in hand to be a source to one another in honor of Christ who showed us how to serve. Particularly, I lift up our public servants this day, that every department, every employee represented here, the work that they do, the challenges that they have, that they might be blessed, encouraged, sustained, and yield goodwill in their graces to continue serving so well. So bless them in their word. We lift up our citizens and pray for their own wisdom and journey and being community and family here. And I think Steve, come on. Lead us now forward into November, and anticipate wonderful holidays, so we might be safe and well and in good fellowship one with another. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Pace, the flag, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Minister Pace. You're welcome. To leave if you would like. If you do, it will not be held against you. And thank you, Councilman Bailey. So with that, at this time, we have a presentation and a proclamation recognizing Alabama Farm City Week. At this time, I'd like to call on our clerk for the reading of this proclamation for Jennifer Davis. I thought it's... Oh, there you are, Jennifer. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas for nearly 65 years, the American people have joined together during Thanksgiving week to observe Farm City Week, a time set aside to express gratitude for the bounty with which God has blessed our land. Throughout the week, Americans recognize the hard work and achievements of the farmers, rural townspeople, and city residents who make our nation's agricultural production and distribution systems so successful. This cooperation between rural and city dwellers for mutual benefit helps to ensure our country's well-being. And whereas America's farmers have provided nutritious food and fiber to sustain our people through many decades of progress, farmers' productivity has increased steadily thanks largely to their initiative in supporting and adopting science-based methods and materials. Because of this productivity, American farmers are able to meet our nation and a growing world. And whereas American agriculture and the many service industries that depend upon it is a story of extraordinary labor creating extraordinary abundance, the American farmer has an impact on every aspect of life, from big cities to small towns and all of the routes in between. At this time of year, it's only fitting that all Americans offer some special sign of thanks to those who grow, harvest, and bring the fruits of sun, seed, and soil to our nation's tables. Now therefore, I, Eddie Lowe, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of November the 18th through November the 24th, 2022, as Alabama Farm City Week. I call upon all citizens in rural areas and cities alike to join in recognizing the accomplishments of our productive farmers and of our urban residents who cooperate to create abundance, wealth, and strength for our nation.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Jennifer, we were looking for you yesterday when Melanie explained why you weren't here, but you realized that the day was today. And again, on behalf of myself and this council, this is a highlight for us. We all realize how important this is, not just for the state of Alabama but for this state, the country, as well as the world because of what farmers does. And I do want to say this. Thank you so much for your passion. You really have the passion for this. You've been going for a while. And on behalf again of the City Council and myself, we'd like to present you again with this proclamation for this week of Farming Week. Thank you. Mike, is yours?
Sure, yeah. Thank you so much for doing this. The Farm City program is something we do annually with the Russell County Farmers Federation. It's a statewide initiative, really a nationwide initiative, to make sure everybody understands that farming feeds us. We had a great turnout. Actually, the kids have already participated in the competition, and we've been out the prizes this last Saturday at the Fort Mitchell Fair. And so I wanted to actually mention that in February, the first Saturday of February, we're going to have sort of a meet the farmer, a local farmer's fair at Fort Mitchell. So everybody's invited. It's going to be a free event. Everybody who has anything to do with farming or producing food or fiber in our area is going to come. So we'd like anyone here or anybody with a question to come. Thank y'all.
Jennifer, let me ask you this. Are you all still having where the kids? I thought it was during the month of November when they have the drawings of farm. Is that something still active?
Yeah, so we actually did a little bit this year. COVID kind of changed our routine that we normally done. And then this year, we bumped it up so that this last Saturday, we could have the breakfast to coincide with the Fall Fest at the fort in Fort Mitchell. So we did the breakfast there. So we gave the kids their prizes and the teachers their prizes. And we had lots of good participation. We'll be sending our first place winners up this day.
Okay, good. But again, thank you for your passion. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Proceeding on, council. I'm the City Clerk. At this time, council, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the regularly scheduled meeting minutes for the October the 17th work session as well as October the 18th council meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask that we take it in one vote as we've always done. When we are all here, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please, to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Vicky. Councilwoman Vicky Johnson, may I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day is not present. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, is there any unfinished business? Okay, if there's not, we will proceed with the resolutions and on administration. We have Resolution Number 2022-233 to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept and approve Change Order Number 2 from Denali Water Solutions LLC for the cleaning of digester 1 in an amount not to exceed $168,981.36. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution 2022-67 accepted the bid from Denali Water Solutions LLC to clean digester 1 at the wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, at a cost of $173,181. And whereas Resolution 2022-130 approved Change Order Number 1 for the WWTP digester 1 cleaning at a cost of $94,620, which approved an additional 95 dry tons to be removed from digester 1, bringing the total dry tons to 256. And whereas Denali Water Solutions LLC has submitted a Change Order Number 2 request for an additional 169.66 dry tons of material removed from digester 1 at the bid price of $996 per dry ton, which would increase the cost of the cleaning by $168,981.36, and the total cost would be $423,957.36. And whereas the digester needs to be completely cleaned to allow for full inspection of the digester seals and pump piping and to allow the full volume of the digester to be used for sludge digestion. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept and approve Change Order Number 2 from Denali Water Solutions LLC for the cleaning of digester 1 in an amount not to exceed $168,981.36. Passed, approved, and adopted this 19th day of October, 2022, ratified this first day of November, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Council, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion?
Motion to ratify.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Council, are there any comments or discussion? All right, if not, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, council, proceeding on on administration, we have Resolution Number 2022-234 to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a sign location agreement with 71 Films LLC to use city location for a documentary. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been approached by 71 Films LLC requesting permission to use city locations for a documentary motion picture currently entitled, Untitled Alabama Football Integration Project. And whereas the project will have interview footage with Phoenix City Mayor Eddie N. Lowe. And whereas 71 Films LLC has a location agreement that they have requested the city to enter into for the city manager to sign. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city managers hereby authorized and directed to enter into and sign a location agreement with 71 Films LLC to use city locations for a documentary motion picture currently entitled, Untitled Alabama Football Integration Project. Passed, approved, and adopted this 27th day of October, 2022, ratified this first day of November, 2022.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments or discussion? Okay, if not, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Abstained.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council. Next is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract agreement with East Alabama Chamber of Commerce in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is committed to and supportive of activities of the East Alabama Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the City Council is cognate of the fact that chamber activities are a vital aspect of everyday community affairs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager are hereby authorized and directed to sign a contract for services with the East Alabama Chamber of Commerce, that contract being attached and herein made a part of the records. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November, 2022.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Council, are there any comments or discussion?
Just a brief comment, if I may, Mayor. The contract agreement between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, there's a lot of things that they have cited that they're doing in combination with this partnership, such as promoting our city and area, assisting Phoenix City with need, with the amphitheater events and a lot of other events. So I'm very much in support of doing that because our city is a growing city. And once we continue to partnership with organizations like this, it is doing nothing but promoting the wellness and the growth and the development of Phoenix City. So we appreciate the chamber for what they do to make our city as prosperous as it could be.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, on the Building Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a contract agreement with Architectural Innovations Design Group LLC for professional services to develop plans for the human resource new office renovation. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is in need of professional services to develop plans for the human resources new office renovations. And whereas Architectural Innovations Design Group LLC has the expertise, experience, and qualifications to perform these services. And whereas as part of this project, Architectural Innovations Design Group LLC will provide design, development, and construction review services. And whereas the city has negotiated a contract agreement with Architectural Innovations Design Group LLC to perform these services for a fee of $9,300. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign a contract agreement with Architectural Innovations Design Group LLC for the above described services. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November, 2022.
Okay, again, thank you so much. Council, all of us have heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion, council? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, proceeding on on the Engineering Department. We have a resolution in reference to filing an application with ALDOT for funding assistance from the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Project -2, also known as ATRIP -2 for street lighting and connectivity improvements along US Highway 280 from Pierce Road to US 431 South. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to rehabilitating and improving local transportation infrastructure for its citizens. And whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to addressing critical needs in our transportation systems such as safety, connectivity, and economic impact. And whereas evidenced by that commitment, the city wishes to make application to the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, for funding assistance from the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program -2, ATRIP -2, for street lighting and connectivity improvements along US Highway 280 from Pierce Road to US 431 South. And whereas the Engineering Department, along with the Alabama Department of Transportation Traffic Design Division, has developed a preliminary scope of work and cost which is estimated to be $2,941,245. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information to ALDOT as may be required. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November, 2022.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, all of us have heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion?
If we can, yes. Can we get Ms. Moore to kind of talk about this a little bit? We put in for this, what, last two years?
Yes, sir, we have.
And we got a pretty good shot of getting it this time, and it's very much needed.
Yes, sir. So this COVID project will go from Pierce Road down to the US 431. It will be along the 280 bypass. So what we're planning on doing, we've got 43 double head overhead overlights out there now, which are the older style, they're LED, but they're still the older style. So we want to light that bypass up a lot. So we're proposing 72 additional poles. We back to back lighting. Some of it will be higher lighting. And also, at the same time, we plan on having connectivity to the traffic signals. There are eight immediate traffic signals along that corridor. So they'll be connected. So traffic flow will go through there a lot easier than what it is currently. Lighting projects that help us less crash, crashes out there, safer for our citizens. And in that area, you know, it hasn't been upgraded since the 70s, so we feel like it's going to be the perfect project. The amount that we can get from the DOT is $2 million. The estimate came in at $2.9 million. So we would be responsible for anything that overrun the $2 million. But, you know, getting two thirds of it paid for and us pay one third, that's going to bring our citizens a lot better. Lighting through there and hopefully just brighten that whole corridor up.
Well, like you said, it hadn't been done in 45 or 50 years almost. Let me ask you this. You were talking about the traffic signals. Even if we did not get this grant, is it still something that can be done about the traffic signals out there? I mean, to keep the traffic flowing? I mean, that's part of an issue too, that it's not separate from this, it's part of it. But that is two different things. We're talking about lighting and traffic flow.
Yes, sir. And that is something the DOT is looking at. They want this project done so much that they're looking at it. This is not funded, that they're going to go ahead and do the traffic signal connectivity because they know it's needed out there. That corridor is one of the worst crash sites in the country.
Well, it is, yeah. We have a lot of accidents out there because everything is out of sequence and traffic backs up so far. And it's, you know, and fortunate for Phoenix City, you know, we're a hub between Atlanta and, say, Panama City. So a lot of people come through here, you know, eight, nine, 10 months out of the year. But that traffic flow out there is a continuous thing every day. So it just needs to be done anyway. But I'm glad to hear that that's part of something if this did not go through. But got my fingers crossed this time that it'll go through because I almost did last time. Thank you.
And again, you all did a good job.
Yes, very good job.
And I guess this is a grant.
Writing this up.
And typically, most, and correct me if I'm wrong, most of the grants are like 80, 20. This is about a 50, close to a 50/50. So we still would have to match it with a million, might as well say a million dollars.
Right, and the reason it's a 50/50 because the project's so expensive. You know, if it would have only been a million dollars, then we would have only had to come up with our 20%. But since it is $2.9 million, that's why we've got to come up with whatever's over $2 million. And just based, so prices for everybody last year at this time, the project would have been under $2 million.
Right.
That's exactly the scope. And we're in this day's prices. So now it's bumped up to $2.9 million.
But you're looking at it too, from Pierce Road all the way down to 431 South, where you turn to go to Eufaula, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
What is that, maybe two miles?
Mile and a half, isn't it?
It's right at a mile and a half.
Mile and a half, right. So that's a long stretch for, you know, when you start talking about putting up additional poles and lighting. It don't sound like a long ways, but it is. If you make that little drive, that's a pretty good way.
Get on there and run, Steve. I want you to jog in one day.
No, 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 no. That's what I'm saying, it sounds, it sounds short.
Jogging one day, you'll really see it.
I can't, look here, I can't run five steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angel.
Yeah, it sounds like a...
Any other comments or discussion? If not, council, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council, proceeding on on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, city manager, and chief of police, Raymond J. Smith, to sign an agreement with Russell County E-911 for a multi-agency system administration contract for Spielman Computer System for a one-time fee of $8,933. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to enter into an agreement, the Russell County E-911,[1390.38] E-911, for the multi-agency system administration contract for Spielman Computer System for the Police Department. And whereas the city council has reviewed said agreement submitted by Russell County E-911 for a one-time fee for a total payment of $8,933. And whereas the city council finds the agreement to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager and chief of police, Raymond J. Smith, are hereby authorized and directed to sign such agreement of the Russell County E-911. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we all have heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Council, any comments or discussion?
If I can just ask one quick, what's the difference between the Russell County E-911 and the 911 at the city? I mean, do they both go to the same location, or do we get information from one after the other?
Yes, actually, there's two PSAPs, or PSAPs for public safety entry point. Most counties have a single PSAP. Russell County years ago decided to have two. Russell County Sheriff's Office has one PSAP located at their office, and the other PSAP is located in the Police Department. That's a redundancy. Depending on where you live and when you dial 911, it's which PSAP that you hit, and that's who sends the emergency response out to you. But all, both of those locations, even though one's housed at the Police Department, one's housed at the Sheriff's Department, both of them are managed and maintained by the Russell County E-911 Board, which we get equipment, and this is what this, the shared software is. So that's how it's set up in Russell County. There are two separate public safety entry points, both of them managed by E-911. We help pay the cost for the software to manage before, and that's what this contract and the next one is for. We do that every year, we've been doing it almost 30 years now, I like that.
I just wanted to, and the E-911 for Russell County, that's the one down by the power company, is that where the building is located there?
Yes, it's the building right across from the power company. That's a, it's a separate board, separate office, you may have a separate funding, so that's how they operate.
But this just kind of makes double sure that, you know, if someone needs an emergency thing, they're gonna get answered by the, pretty much by the correct one, whether you can get the fastest response possible.
And the good thing about it, having two PSAPs, again, that was something that was done years ago, and the thinking behind that was, and we've had to have this out before, if a PSAP goes down, everything rolls to the safety PSAP. So even if our PSAP went down, for example, Russell County would be able to answer the 911 call. Same thing if Russell County's went down, it would all work. And when we have to do work, we can combine the two PSAPs into a single location. So we work very closely together, back and forth, but that's the, that's the design of the system, that's a redundancy. But Storm, for example, damage to Sheriff's Department, they could leave Russell County, I think we see until they got it up and running again, vice versa.
It's just safety factor, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Council, any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council proceeding on, on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, city manager, and chief of policemen, Raymond J. Smith, to enter into an agreement with Russell County E-911 in an amount of $34,839 for a multi-agency software agreement and support contract for Motorola Solutions, formerly Spielman Technologies Incorporated. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to enter into an agreement with Russell County E-911 for the multi-agency software agreement and support contract for Motorola Solutions, formerly Spielman Technologies Incorporated, for the Police Department. And whereas the city council has reviewed said agreement submitted by Russell County E-911 for a 12-month term and total payment of $34,839. And whereas the city council finds the agreement to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor, city manager, and chief of police, Raymond J. Smith, are hereby authorized and directed to sign such agreement with Russell County E-911. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November 2022.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Counsel, we have heard the reading of this resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? And again, thank you, Chief, for explaining that this is also part of the last one we just approved. If no comments or discussion at this time, calling on the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the Police Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, city manager, and chief of policemen, Raymond J. Smith, to enter into an agreement with Alabama Power to add additional license plate readers, also known as LPR cameras. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to enter into an agreement with Alabama Power Company for a license plate reader, LPR camera system for the Police Department. And whereas the city council has reviewed said agreement submitted by Alabama Power Company for a total monthly service amount of $1,604.19 under a 24-month service agreement with a one-time upfront cost of $2,250. And whereas the city council finds the agreement to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor, city manager, and police chief are hereby authorized and directed to sign such agreement with Alabama Power Company. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November 2022.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, may I ask for a motion, please? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept and approve change order number one with Jim House and Associates, Inc. for the pump rebuild in an amount not to exceed $4,049. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution 2022-147 accepted the quote from Jim House and Associates, Inc., to rebuild the pump at the wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, at a cost of $9,445. And whereas during the course of rebuilding the pump, Jim House and Associates determined that there is additional work needed to have the pump be fully operational after being put back together. And whereas Jim House and Associates, Inc., has submitted a quote with the additional cost of $4,049, bringing the grand total to $13,494. And whereas the cost of the new pump would be $60,100. And whereas the Utilities Department is submitting change order number one request in the amount of $4,049 for the additional work required for the pump rebuild. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby direct and authorize the mayor and city manager to accept and approve change order number one with Jim House and Associates, Inc., for the pump rebuild in an amount not to exceed $4,049. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November 2022.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. That's a second, Councilman Gordy.
Yes.
We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Council, any comments or discussion?
Just a quick question. How often do you have to rebuild these pumps?
Yes, sir, Councilmen Bailey, Mayor and Council. This is a record of fielding work that we do. We have to service them every four, maybe five years, just to check and make sure everything's good with our seals, and check the hole and change the hole. It's something that we can't do on site, because of the size of the pumps, and we send it off, and like every five years to answer your question.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty good life in between doing that each ever five years for, you know, 10,000 to 12,000, $15,000 versus what one would actually cost you. So that's good maintenance, and it's, and it sounds like it works very well for us, so glad to see y'all doing that regularly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Any other comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the ordinance, we have a public hearing and second reading. Ordinance to rezonate 9.73-plus amount of acre of land located at Garner Way off of White Rock Road south of Highway 80 from an R2 zone, medium-density residential, residential district to an R3 zone, high-density residential district, White Rock LLC, the owner. The first reading was held on the 20th of September. I will not ask the clerk to reread this ordinance. However, at this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing, and if there's someone, as I see, that would like to come and address this council in reference to this rezoning, now's the time to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Lo. I'm Richard Kimmer, this is my colleague Travis Hardwood. I've got some documents I want to present to you, Councilman Hardwood.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're here for rezoning the final phase of the Summer Vineyard subdivision, which is a piece of land off of Highway 80 that was annexed into Phoenix City back in 2009. None of the land surrounding Summer Vineyard is in city limits, it's all county property, meaning there's no zoning associated with it. We just have this singular subdivision, which has been majority completed to date since the building started in 2009. Just going to show you a few pictures of what the surrounding property looks like, and we've got pictures of these vineyard pamphlets, these are the areas around the White Rock Road, Summer Vineyard subdivision. These are the homes in Summer Vineyard that have been built to date, and I will note, we're here for the developer, we don't, we haven't built any of these homes. These are all third-party home builders, and I'll tell you, remember how that's important, but this is the style, these are the homes that are being bought into Phoenix City, and the developer's seeking to finish the subdivision so that more homes like this can be made available to the citizens. Just a brief history, again, this was all annexed in 2009. It's been divided into four phases. Phase one was completed in 2010. Everything was preliminary approved in 2009, the subdivision plans, the drainage plans, the lock with. So phase one's done in 2010. Phase two A was done in 2011. Phase two B was done in 2014. And all these three phases are 50-foot-wide patio home lots. Phase three, which is the final phase we're seeking to rezone, is, also was designed as 50-foot-wide lots. In 2016, there was changing to the zoning ordinances, changing to subdivision regs that would no longer allow R2 to build 50-foot-wide lots. We're seeking to be rezoned to R3, which would allow that. And at the Planning Commission hearing we attended, where this rezoning was initially denied, there was a lot presented about 50-foot-wide lots versus 60-foot-wide lots, draining issues, problems with 60-foot-wide lots, or problems with 50-foot-wide lots as opposed to 60-foot-wide lots. I printed off the table from the city's current zoning ordinances. And again, this subdivision is currently R2, we're seeking to go to R3. And I'll highlight it, the two portions here, that would be subject to what we're discussing tomorrow.
Thank you.
At the Planning Commission meeting, it was put forward to the commission that the problem with drainage was really because the homes were built too close together on 50-foot-wide lots versus 60-foot-wide lots. If you follow the chart here, the depth, the setback lines between houses from the front of the road is all the same in R2 and R3. Your only difference is how wide the front of the lot is. If it has to stay R2, that just means a bigger house gets built. Closer to a bigger house, which would mean more rainfall in between each other. The other problem is, is that when this was all approved in 2009, the developer incurred 70-plus percent of their cost upfront in doing the sewage, in doing the utilities. It's all already there. If the city is to force him to do 60-foot-wide lots, a lot of this stuff has to be torn up at a substantial cost, making it, you know, an unprofitable venture moving forward. We're just seeking that we get a rezone from R2 to R3, and as you can see, there's not, not a big change here. We're just asking to be allowed to build phase three according to this plan that was approved back in 2009. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hardwood. And I'll be, I'll be brief, I'm Travis Hardwood at Finley Firm, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Mr. Kimmer said, but I think what's important is the standard upon which this is judged, and that's that the zoning decisions can't withstand judicial scrutiny if they're clearly arbitrary and unreasonable. So if we take a look at what we have before us, at the initial meeting where the recommendation to deny was made, the excuse that was made was drainage. There's a big issue with drainage if we allow these 50-foot-wide lots instead of 60-foot-wide, 60-foot-wide lots. Well, that has been, quite frankly, completely debunked by the fact that the setback requirements are exactly the same. I don't know how you can get much more arbitrary than saying the same setbacks, the same setback requirement applies, but a lot that's wider, that's going to have a bigger house, is going to not have a drainage issue. That was the only reason, there were people who came in and spoke, and none of them raised an issue with width of the lots. In fact, this would be in conformity with the rest of the subdivision. It's not a situation where all of the rest of them are 60-foot, and we're looking to go to 50-foot. Every one of these is 50-foot. So there's, again, and I said I wouldn't repeat myself, and I am here, but the setback requirements are the same. It can't be arbitrary, it can't be an arbitrary decision, and all we're asking is let this be built out with the existing infrastructure in conformity with the rest of the subdivision. The drainage issue is not an issue. The setbacks are exactly the same. And I appreciate y'all's time, unless anyone has any questions for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I call? Mrs. Haddaway and Angel, but are there anyone else?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Well, I know that you're saying drainage is not an issue, but it, whether they're 50-foot lot or 60-foot lot, so I agree with you on part of that. But that is one of the issues there, there are drainage problems. So I mean, you can't, no, y'all are not denying that, and the city's not going to deny that. So the drainage issues are still there, and you do have, you know, with the setback on it, but my point is, why up to this point, y'all are talking about the only difference is being a 50-foot lot versus 60-foot lot? But when I look at the zoning regulations, I see two other differences. See a difference that you can build townhouses in there that you couldn't build before, and you can build multiple-family homes, which is apartments you can't build before. So my question to you is if this zoning has changed, those two options become viable for the, for the developer in the middle of a neighborhood that never anticipated having those options available. So that's what I have a problem with. Now, if those did not exist, and it was just strictly the width of the lots with the setback lines, you could possibly have a viable argument. But when those two options come in to play, to me, that kind of takes away, you know, the only problem that you're discussing, which is the drainage problem with the width of the lots.
And, and Councilman Bailey, we've agreed at the planning commission, and we'll agree to the same speculation today, y'all can approve this with conditions?
Well, that would be to him, but if he ever sold it to somebody, or whoever owns it, ever sold it to somebody, I don't know that that would hold up in court, holding somebody else.
We put a covenant on the record that holds up as long as the land's there.
I mean, I just, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a legal mind, so I don't know, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, that's what I'm agreeing with the city today, is that to address your concern, that, that would run with the land forever, until the city agreed to terminate that, okay? So if the city can approve it with conditions?
All right.
We're agreeing to build houses out.
Right. Well, and again, I'm not disagreeing with that. Now, my next question to y'all, since y'all representing the developer, the owner, why the two options that he had from the time that this started? Because I sat down and talked to him in his office down there for a long time one day, him and his son. Why did he not take advantage of the two options that he had during that time for, on, where we had put a stoppage on it, to where you had to build on 60-foot lots? He was allowed two extensions. So why did those two extensions pass in a timeframe without him doing anything about it on two exten-, not one extension, but two extensions? What would be the reasoning for that? That now it would matter now like a third extension? If this was done now, there would be no guarantee that he would do anything tomorrow that he didn't do in the last two extensions. So I mean, that's what I'm coming from. It sounds like we've done something wrong, or we're not allowing him to do something that he's had plenty of opportunity to do.
Correct.
So I'm just saying, even if this went along today, there's no guarantee today that he would take advantage of what he's asking us to do. He could have already done that. So what changed?
Well, Mr. Hardwood, first of all, I wasn't privy to that conversation.
Right.
But to tell you one, me and this hardwood have been come here for free. I don't think he's paying us to come down here.
Right.
Just, just to.
Well, I, I do agree with you, and y'all have been very respectful, and I want to be respectful back to y'all. But since y'all representing him, I would think that he's told you something has changed that's made his time and be now where it wasn't then, is what I'm saying. But he never told me anything about that when I sat down in his office and talked to him. I think he talked to ever one of us separately, and that was his right to do that, and I'm not, I'm not upset with him at all.
Sure.
I, I, he's supposed to fight for his side, don't get me wrong, he's supposed to. But also, I'm trying to understand still and wrap my mind around giving two extensions, and maybe even more, and not taking advantage of them, there had to be a reason to why it didn't work then, and that's what gives me pause now, is that if it didn't work then, why all of a sudden now would it matter when it could've been done way back then? All he had to do was finish the infrastructure, is, if I'm correct, on understanding the way it works. You said he's put the, say, the pipes under the ground, but all he had to do was finish the roads, finish everything, and get it to that point to where then he could turn it over to his builders, or the contractors that wanted to build in there. That's all he, and you're saying that that would mess him up now if he wasn't allowed to do that. That's all he had to do back then. And that would be a large cost of his development. Don't get me wrong, I understand that. But if I had that much money invested already, I would finish out what I had started to do to where I couldn't get caught, if you wanted to call this a trap, which it's not a trap. But I couldn't get caught in that, is, would be my, would be my mental capacity.
Well, I mean, what he has invested already is, I mean, this is a multimillion-dollar project.
I agree.
If you look back at the, I'm not a developer, I'm not an economist.
Oh, yeah, I'm not either, yeah.
Look at what the housing market's done since 2014, or 2009 to 2021, '22, when we're trying to come back and get this done, it's been a huge swing. There's a gigantic demand for housing, even with interest rates and everything.
Oh, yeah. But in 2016, when he was, when this changed, you know, from that point, he was giving extensions. So, and since then, the way I, what I see, is the housing market has really never been better, and to my, to my knowledge, of, you know, it's a seller's opportunity, not a buyer's opportunity, and of course, he's a seller, and it's a seller's opportunity. And so it seems to me like, you know, somewhere during that timeframe that I had those extensions, I would've just jumped in there with both feet and got, and went ahead and got finished with it, to where we don't get to this point. And that's what I'm saying, I don't understand, he acts like it's our fault that we're at this point, but in my opinion, and that's just me, I'm speaking for myself, he's allowed it to get to this point. And when I say his, I'm talking about the developer, the owners, the LLC, without calling any names. And so that's what I'm saying, it's almost like they have caused it to get to this point, not us, we're not, there's not a bad guy in the room, but we're not the bad guy either, there's not a bad guy in the room. Both of us can agree that we both see it differently, is what I'm trying to say. And, and it's all right to do that and have opinions, but that's just where I come from, is that we, we're not the reason it is at this point. But it is before us, and we do have to address it today.
And, and I think we're, we're, you know, one side can blame the other about what happened in the past, okay? What, what we're here to talk about today is a solution, and the issue that was raised was drainage at the public hearing, not the extensions. Nobody disagrees about, about the facts, and everyone wishes we wouldn't be here today right now if things would've happened back in 2016. But what council has before it is. But what council has before it is, with a stipulation and a willingness to record a deed restriction that would run with the land, that would keep the other types of homes you're concerned about from, from being an issue, would it be arbitrary and capricious to not rezon this so that it can be in conformity with the subdivision? So I, I don't, obviously, we all wish that would have happened before, but I think we're, I think we're losing the forest for the trees. What we're here about today is this property with this stipulation and that standard. I'll just add one thing. Councilman Bailey, I know you're, you're a business, you're a business owner. I'm a business owner. Miss White Rock is a business, Mr. Bowden, one of the owners. I wouldn't come, I mean, it, it sounds like we're substituting judgment as to how business, I don't think, I could come down there and do what you do, even if I tried for years and learned about your, your line of business. Like, well, I can't, I can't tell you why I might didn't do it in 2016 as opposed to 2019, or whenever the last extension may have expired. But I know that it costs a substantial amount of money for him to finish that thing if he was going to finish it. And the time has to be right for that to work, otherwise, some others or somebody else will wind up on it. He's got to time the thing right. I mean, the extension may, may on paper just not have worked out, where I gotta finish 52 lots in here and sell them. If I put another million dollars in it, does somebody gonna be there to buy it? I don't know if that was the case five years ago. And that's what we're up against now, is, you know, houses are still selling, they may not be in two years. We want to finish it now, we've got a good product already there, and I think it would benefit the city by having more homes, more tax space, to have this thing done and done properly. This is an in-town feller, this is not somebody coming from Atlanta or Dallas or wherever. He's here, they're here, they're gonna do it right. They, even the drainage problems that have been there today have been a remedy, even though he may not have had much of an obligation to do it. This was, this is from Ms. Moore's office, you know, days before the public hearing, and this is a plan to remedy a drainage issue, be it 50-foot wide lots. And they agreed to do it. They're here, they'll pick up the phone, they're not going to disappear. We're just asking for the city to allow them to rezon this, let them finish the project and move on. There's a demand for housing. Citizens would benefit from it.
Let me ask you this, too. What gives me pause, even if the townhouses and the multifamily apartments fell out off the mound? Being allowed two extensions, then all of a sudden, we change our mind and we allow him to change this, what do we say to other developers that we may have to follow the other rules and regulations by not doing it for them? That's, you know, we have, we have to be uniform, we have to say the same thing. A stop, a stop sign means stop at every stop sign. Green light means go whatever, evergreen light. If we start going back and forth, up and down, sideways and around, backwards, then there's no continuity to anything that we say or any, any decision we make. And we have to be, as far as I'm concerned, I have to be true to exact, to everybody fairly and exactly the same. No matter who they are, whether they're my neighbor, which he's a neighbor of mine, I've built two houses in one of his neighborhoods. He does a fabulous job. I like him, we're good friends, or have been up to this point, and I will continue to be a good friend to his. But I still have to be fair to everybody else that's in the same business that he's in.
Let me say this. One thing that this council has done has been able to hang their hats on consistency. You all are attorneys, you all know that once you start getting outside of that, then it's just a matter of time when you begin to have more problem because of the credibility that you've, values that you have established. So as Mr. Bailey just eloquently said, then there's a consistency that we have been able to uphold and hang our hats on. And we've had others who have come to present almost identical, the same thing. But again, what we have prided ourselves on, a good pride, is the consistencies that this council has done with transparency, and transparency is the best policy. So, you know, again, that's, that's one of the main things that kind of gives heartburns of that consistency.
Can I speak to that?
Hold on a minute, but I want you to, Mrs. Haddaway, if we can.
At what time, when would the time be, so we can bring city personnel up? I want one thing to be recorded here, though. It's not just on the council. This has been before the planning commission and the boards of board, different issues, and they have been denied. So it's not just the council, this don't just lay on the city apartments, it's been other people who have to look at this with zoning subdivision regulations, and it's been four extensions, it's been more than two. It's been four different ones, and they will explain that when they're able to come up.
Mrs. Haddaway and Angel.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Mr. Hargrove said something about our subdivision and zoning regulations are capricious and arbitrary. We were sued, the city was, by the Phoenix City Home Builders Association quite a few years back. All of that was brought up then, and the court ruled in our favor. I just wanted to say that because I don't think any of y'all were on the council when we got sued, and I just wanted y'all to have that knowledge.
Okay. Mrs. Haddaway and Angel, at least we need to let our people, really.
Good morning. Yes, sir. The tanning and tentacle review staff did review this recently request, one from a medium-density residential to a high-density residential. We compared it with our complex of plan and our land use plan and found that it did not meet the intent. The parcel in question is in our suburban residential district in our land use plan, which typically signifies larger lots. The higher-density residential requires it to have all city services and to be served by electric load directly off an arterial load. This parcel itself, suburban residential, and it's served by purely local loads. So it is our recommendation to the planning commission that it did not meet our complex of plan. The planning commission did have a public hearing, and they recommended to city councils that this was, we've thrown in a request, feed the night. Do y'all have any questions? And Angel's got the timeline and the engineering.
Come on, Angel. Thank you.
Yes, sir, council. I just want to first start going over the timeline. I know that we went over this yesterday, and I'm just going to read it so everybody's on record, everybody hears it. So the preliminary plat was approved on September the 22nd, 2009. So a preliminary plat was amended and approved again on June the 14th, 2011. Then we had a zoning ordinance was amended on 5/15/2012. We had a preliminary plat granted a 24-month time extension on May 14th, 2013. So that's our second extension by that time. We, our zoning ordinance was amended again in July 15th, 2014. Preliminary plat granted a 24-month time extension again on May the 26th, 2015. That's our third extension, and these are two months, or two-year extensions. Subdivision regulations were amended to 29, 2016. In that subdivision regulation, we specifically put in that, that any sub, any preliminary plat approved after June 22nd, 2010, and prior to the most recent amendment to these regulations, shall be granted a maximum of one more time extension of 24 months. So preliminary plat was granted its last 24-month time extension on 5/23/2017. So from that point right there, Mr. Bowden, Miss White Rock LLC was notified that they had 24 months to complete the plat as was, or either they were going to have to go before the new planning or the new subdivision regulations. The 24-month time extension expired on 6/14/2019. So then they submitted the preliminary plat again, same thing, Summer Vineyard submitted on November the 9th, 2021. It was kicked back because it did not meet our subdivision regulations or our zoning regulations. They did go before the BOZA board, and a various request was submitted to BOZA and denied on January the 20th, 2022. So that's where we are now. That has been the timeline. We have a letter where we sent to Mr. Donnie Amerson, who at that point in time in 2017 was our contact person. It was since certified, explaining to him that the preliminary plat was about to expire. He could request one more 24-month time extension. Mr., the certified paperwork was signed. Mr. Bowden then wrote wanting to request his last 24-month time extension. So that's how that all got approved. And Mr. Bowden was aware at that point that he had to complete that within 24 months or have to go to the new subdivision regulations and our new zoning ordinance. I also have an email where when we were doing the draft subdivision regulations, we sent out to the developers, hey, on November the 24th, 2015, we're going to have a work session. If you've got any questions about our new subdivision regulations or the draft, please come to it. We have on record for Brian Harris, who met Brian McGill, George Mochman, with Brian McGill, Joanne English with Bowden Company, and Julia at my, Brian McGill, and Nathan Brian McGill. They were all notified of that work session. Those were the engineers of record at the time, and Ms. English of Ali Worx in Mr. Bowden's office. So we believe we gave them notice. There was a public hearing scheduled at planning commission for the subdivision regulation update, also the zoning ordinance, and there was also a public hearing at the council meeting for the zoning ordinance. So I don't know how much more we could have been available to anybody to let them know that these things have changed. So I know that there has been a lot of communication and everything about drainage, and, excuse me, sir, excuse me, darling, I just wanted to show y'all, these are the type of drainage issues that we are dealing with out at Summer Vineyard. And I understand that our zoning ordinance still allows for four-foot setbacks. I didn't really get involved in the residential or the house construction until this subdivision came around because we were having so many issues with drainage. Usually, building department would go out, they would do the building permit, they would look at the lots in that area, but we got involved now in engineering. What we got found in engineering is that, one, 50-foot lot widths aren't big enough, and, two, the four-foot setbacks don't work. We're working right now between planning and zoning to try to get some text amendments done to get rid of that four-foot setback. There's no way that you can put in a drainage well, air conditioner pad, and get positive drainage for any of these homes. You can see how close they are. This is pretty much the property line. See water standing here, see water standing here. So these people, every time it rains, they call us, wanting to know why the city didn't allow for proper drainage through there. We've met out there with the home builders, we've met out there with the residents many a time. So the issue that we have here today is planning commission saw the need to stop the allowance of time extension after time extension after time extension. We're going to require everybody from tomorrow back to our new subdivision regulations. There's other preliminary plats out there that have expired, but they were still valid under the old regulations, so are we going to allow them to come out and hand out in this bill with what they had at one company now and for the new deliberation? We got to bring this in, so that's what we're working to do. Also, that last, I think the last handout, Mr. Kimmer gave y'all about a drainage plan that the developer is out there working on. We sent him a notice of violation on May the 13th, 2022. So that plan that y'all see there, it took him until August the 25th to get us the information that we needed. So that's how well he's working on it. I think they came out there last week to start on it. So they haven't actually got all the drainage stuff considered, they're working on it. So these are the types of things that we're having issues with. And it's hard for us to go back to the citizens and say, we allow this. We see the problem now because engineering's more involved in it. That's when we got to have these text amendments to this. But it's not a matter necessarily, the drainage, drainage is an issue, but it's here, this one is that they were given time extension after time extension and notifications that they've got to be brought up. And not only is it a zoning issue, subdivision regulations are going to be another huge issue. Our members of the state and developer does not realize this. We wrote to them in a letter saying that you don't meet the, or the subdivision regulations. The new right-of-way widths based off the old preliminary plat, the old preliminary plat had a 50-foot right-of-way, new subdivision regulations require a 60-foot right-of-way. The pavement width in the old subdivision regulations were 24 feet, new subdivision regulations are 26 feet. Street width from back of curb to back of curb has changed from 28 feet in the old regulations to 30 feet in the new regulations. The cul-de-sac right-of-way width radius has changed from 50 feet to 60 feet. The cul-de-sac pavement width radius changed from 40 feet to 48 feet in pavement, or with radius. So there's other challenges that have got to be made. Additional waivers would have to be requested or approved or denied, but at what point in time do you stick to your regulations and say, hey, we gave y'all plenty of notice, we gave you an extra two years to get this done, and we did this, and now we're going to make those improvements?
And can I, can I ask you a question while you're up there? And the other subdivisions that this developer had going on during those times when this just stopped, was, he was continuing to build in those other places?
Yes, sir.
So he could have took care of these problems as the other developments, as you all know, that they're in charge of in this city. Same way it was building in ours, they could have took care of this before this time lapse. So they decided to ignore it, and now it creates a gigantic problem for us. We don't want to be against anybody that's here, but we got to serve the other developers the same way as we serve, you know, give them the equal type thing. It don't make sense.
Consistency.
You know, we've been begging and begging, get this done so we wouldn't be here today. We don't want to be here today with this type of situation because it puts the city in a bad situation. So, you know, it forces into different decisions, and these things get to be pretty tough. You know, this is where we should not, we shouldn't even be at this point. Those things could have been easily taken care of, and you know, it is no real excuse except for we are going to force you all to change, whatever you change, we're not going to go by it, and we're going to force you all to allow us to do things that we shouldn't be doing. That's a problem.
Can I respond to the consistency question?
Yes, sir.
Certainly. So we are dealing, one thing that lawyers learn about is dealing with the case before us. I don't think there's another developer, and maybe I'm wrong, who's going to come in who's got two-thirds of the subdivision complete, had a preliminary plat, had the back phase is all that is not completed in there, already built everything out, and is simply asking to have the remaining homes conform with the homes that are already there. So if someone comes in with that exact scenario, I think you are setting a consistency precedent. But this, if we want to talk about consistency, we have to address the matter that's before y'all, which is with all of these circumstances. With regard to the time and the extensions, et cetera, again, we're not disputing that. What I'm struggling to understand is, if it was okay in that 24-month extension, why? Just because the regulations changed and there were extensions granted? That seems to be, we've gone from drainage now to, well, he had extensions and, and he didn't do it during the extensions. We're here asking for rezoning, okay? That's because it wasn't done during the, during the extensions. But if it was good enough during all these extensions, to me, that's a nonstarter, that's outside of why would it not be good enough now under these specific, unique circumstances? I didn't see a bunch of developers on the agenda in here today who had, had expiration on the revised regulations that are coming in here asking for relief. We're coming in here asking for relief with this specific set of circumstances. All of us wish, y'all wish, I'm sure our client wishes because he's having to pay us to be here today, that this would have been done before. It wasn't, but what's before y'all is this specific set of circumstances, this specific subdivision, and all we're asking y'all to do is, is consider that, consider whether, given that the builder, you know, that, that's put up there again, 70-foot lots, that exact thing could go in right now. To me, that's, that's a red herring at this point, and I appreciate y'all's time today. I'm sure we probably go a little bit over. I appreciate y'all's consideration. If there's not any other questions, then I'll sit down.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else that would like to come and address council? If not, I am declaring this public hearing closed, and with that, at the time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to deny from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Call for the vote. Call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, y'all. Proceeding on, counsel, we have some first reading. We have an ordinance to amend code of ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, Article three, underground utilities policy, Section seventy-four dash sixty-one through seventy-four dash sixty-two, seventy-four dash sixty-five, and seventy-four dash sixty-seven, and add Section seventy-four through sixty-eight through seventy-four through sixty-nine. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on the clerk for the first reading. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, Article three, underground utilities policy, Section seventy-four sixty-one through seventy-four sixty-two, seventy-four sixty-five, and seventy-four sixty-seven, and add Section seventy-four sixty-eight through seventy-four sixty-nine. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the code of ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter seventy-four, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, Article three, underground utilities policy, Section seventy-four sixty-one through seventy-four sixty-two, seventy-four sixty-five, and seventy-four sixty-seven are hereby amended, and Section seventy-four sixty-eight through seventy-four sixty-nine are added as follows. Section seventy-four sixty-one, purpose, intent. A, the city recognizes the need and responsibility to provide its citizens with adequate infrastructure and to facilitate the appropriate utility improvements and repairs to maintain expected quality of life. B, the city also recognizes the cost, damage, and maintenance associated with these repairs and improvements. C, the provisions of this article are intended to address these issues and recover associated costs, including but not limited to administration, inspections, repairs, and maintenance. Section seventy-four dash sixty-two, administration. The city engineer is designated by the city as the authorized representative to enforce the provisions of this policy. All requirements for utility work within the city right-of-way shall conform to the standards set forth in the Phoenix City Public Works Manual, current edition. Section seventy-four dash sixty-five, excavations. A, no opening or excavation in any street shall extend beyond the center line of the street before being backfilled and the surface of the street temporarily restored. Streets shall not completely close, streets shall not be completely closed to traffic without approval from the city and with proper prior notice given to the police and fire departments as noted on the permit. B, no more than two hundred and fifty linear feet measured longitudinal shall be opened at any street at any one time. C, all utility facilities shall be exposed sufficiently ahead of trench excavation work to avoid damage to those facilities and to permit the relocation if necessary. D, pipe drains, pipe culverts, or other facilities encountered during excavation work shall be protected. E, monuments of concrete, iron, or other lasting materials set for the purpose of locating or preserving the lines of any street or property subdivision or precise survey reference point, a permanent survey reference point, a permanent survey benchmark within the city shall not be removed or disturbed or caused to be removed unless permission to do so is first obtained and rotting from the city. F, when any earth, gravel, or other excavated material is caused to roll, flow, or wash upon any street, the permittee shall cause the same to be removed from the street within eight hours after the deposit. G, every permittee shall place around the project such barriers, lights, warning flags, and danger signs as shall be determined by the city, as well as the Alabama Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices to be necessary for the protection of the public. H, access to private road driveways shall be provided except during working hours when construction operations prohibit provision of such access. Free access must be provided at all times to fire hydrants. I, excavated materials shall be laid compactly along the side of the trench and kept trimmed up so as to cause as little inconvenience as possible to public travel. In order to expedite the flow of traffic or to abate a dirt or dust nuisance, tow boards or bins may be required. If the excavated area is muddy and causes inconvenience to pedestrians, temporary wooden plank walls shall be installed. If the street is not wide enough to hold excavated material without using part of the adjacent sidewalk, the permittee shall keep a passageway at least one-half the sidewalk width open along such sidewalk line. J, all pavement cuts, openings, and excavations shall be properly made, backfilled, and temporarily surfaced by the permittee according to Sections four-point-four and four-point-five of the Phoenix City Public Works Manual, current edition. K, all work is subject to inspection by the city engineering department and utilities department. Work shall be permitted during daylight hours, Monday through Friday, between the hours of eight AM and five PM local time unless approved by the city. Section seventy-four dash sixty-seven, permit fees. A, purpose. It is the purpose of this section to provide for the recovery of costs from permittees for the implementation of the program established herein, including but not limited to the costs associated with inspecting and monitoring street openings, excavations, and cuts. The applicable charges and fees shall include a permit application fee and an inspection fee. These fees relate solely to matters covered by this article and are separate from all other fees chargeable by the city. The city engineer and/or his designate shall administer, implement, and enforce the provisions of this article and collect the fees and charges prescribed herein. B, application fee. A non-refundable permit application fee in the amount now or hereafter established by the city shall accompany each application for a street opening and/or pavement cut permit to cover the cost of administration. If the permit is denied, the application fee shall not be refunded to the applicant. If the permit is approved, the applicant shall also pay to the city an inspection fee and a pavement resurfacing fee as provided herein. C, inspection fee. An inspection fee in the amount now or hereafter established by the city will be assessed for payment disturbed by the opening, excavation, or cut permit. The inspection fee shall cover the cost for monitoring and inspecting the excavation and/or pavement cut. Section seventy-four dash sixty-eight, warranty of work. The permittee shall identify and hold harmless the City of Phoenix City as officers, agents, and employees from any liability to persons or property resulting from any act or omission of the applicant permittee in performing the work and for one year after the work is Section seventy-four dash sixty-nine, severability. If any section, clause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity, validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance, passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November twenty twenty-two.
Gonna drink some water and take a breath.
Take a deep breath.
Take a deep one.
She just ran a mile and a half.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we all have heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to place on first reading.
All right. We have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the first reading, counsel, it is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter forty-six, license, taxation, miscellaneous business regulations, and add an Article eighteen, medical cannabis. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter forty-six, licenses, taxation, and miscellaneous business regulations, and adding Article eighteen, medical cannabis. Whereas in the two thousand twenty-one legislative session, the Alabama Legislature passed Act number twenty-one dash four fifty, the Act, legalizing and creating a regulatory framework for medical cannabis. And whereas the Alabama Legislature made a number of findings of fact, including, medical research indicates that the administration of medical cannabis can successfully treat various medical conditions and alleviate the symptoms of various medical conditions. There are residents in Alabama suffering from a number of medical conditions whose symptoms could be alleviated by the administration of medical cannabis products if used in a controlled setting under the supervision of a physician licensed in this state. Establishing a program providing for the administration of cannabis derivatives for medical use in this state will not only benefit patients by providing relief to pain and other debilitating symptoms, but also provide opportunities for patients with these debilitating conditions to function and have a better quality of life, and provide employment and business opportunities for farmers and other residents of this state and revenue to state and local governments. Whereas the Act authorizes and requires the Medical Cannabis Commission to regulate dispensary operations, thus addressing any health, safety, or welfare concerns for the citizens of the City of Phoenix City. And whereas the Act requires the governing body of any municipality by ordinance to authorize the operation of the dispensing sites within the corporate limits of the municipality. And whereas a dispensary would be required to purchase a business license and pay sales tax to the City of Phoenix City, thus increasing revenue. And whereas the City of Phoenix City wishes to authorize the operation of medical cannabis dispensing sites within the corporate limits of the City of Phoenix City to assure its citizens can receive the medical and economic benefits of medical cannabis. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Chapter forty-six, licenses, taxation, and miscellaneous business regulations be amended by adding Article eighteen, medical cannabis. Be it further ordained, in accordance with Alabama Code twenty-two A fifty-one, a holder of a license granted by the State of Alabama pursuant to Act number twenty-one dash four fifty, is hereby authorized to operate a medical cannabis dispensing site within the corporate limits of the City of Phoenix City, subject to the provisions of Act number twenty-one dash four fifty, any relevant provisions of the code of ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, and any applicable zoning restrictions the City of Phoenix City may adopt pursuant to Code twenty-two A fifty-one C three, code of Alabama. Be it further ordained that any business license or sales tax revenue generated by medical cannabis dispensaries authorized by this ordinance shall be deposited to the general fund. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, approval, and publication as required by law, passed, approved, and adopted this first day of November twenty twenty-two.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee. We've heard the first reading. Counsel, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have the motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, on the conditional use. We have an application for conditional use, approval submitted by owner Stephen R. Watkins to located barber shop slash salon at property located at fifteen twenty-one Fifth Avenue. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. There's a letter dated October the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, to mayor and city council members regarding the conditional use of fifteen twenty-one Fifth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, three-six-eight-six-seven, Stephen R. Watkins owner. The Planning Commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, October the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, to consider the request of Stephen R. Watkins for conditional use of the property located at fifteen twenty-one Fifth Avenue. The applicant wishes to locate a barber shop salon. It is the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this request for conditional use be approved by the City Council. Sincerely, Billy Sims, Chairman, Phoenix City Planning Commission, Eliza Phillips, Secretary, Phoenix City Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution for conditional use. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Jimmy, we don't have anything?
No, not today, anyway. No, but I, I think they've already sent me one for the next meeting.
I spoke too early yesterday, then. Counsel, anything? Anyone would like to add or take away or say before I defer to the city manager of anything?
I do have one thing, Mayor. I just wanna thank our public safety division. Last night, I had a couple of events that I attended, one in particular at my church with the Halloween event, and did see public safety out. I have not heard of any reports that anything happened in our community, and it's a good thing that they're out, once again, keeping our community safe. So I just wanna commend those that did what was necessary for that not to happen, is to have any type of unforeseen events that would cause harm to others. So thank you to the public safety division, Mr. Hunter. Thank you for doing the work that you're doing. And one week from today, Tuesday, one week from today is a critical day within our nation. It is voting day, it is election day, and so I just want to encourage all citizens, those that have the privilege and the right to cast their ballot, do so. It is so important. The election process is always one that everyone can take part in, so plan to vote if you have not made your plan, definitely make your plan to vote. Locate either, you know, your, you know, your county department, your city department, your, you know, your state department on where to go to vote, but my encouragement is so that everyone will be planning to go out and vote on November the eighth. November the eighth is our voting day.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Counsel. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, just wanna speak just a little bit about a while ago. I'm proud of the way our counsel operates, above board. We don't go behind closed doors. We don't ask each other how we're gonna vote. We don't influence each other on how we're gonna vote. We treat everybody the same, to the best of my knowledge, whether you're local, whether you're from out of town, whether it's somebody we know, and look, there's very few people in this city or county, and even this part of the state, that somebody inside this room, including all of us, that they don't know. So there's very few strangers that come through that door. You have to be almost from the other side of the world for somebody not to know somebody that comes through that door. I feel like we give everybody a fair shake in this city. I know I do, and I know everybody else at this table does. I just feel like, you know, I just needed to say that for the fact that I don't wanna be misinterpreted, thinking that, for whatever reason, me personally, I'm against progress or against something going on in our city. I'm not. I wanna see our city grow as much as anyone wants to see it grow. I'm proud to have seen the growth in our city in almost seventy years that I've been living here in this city. So I'm very proud of what we do, and I'm proud of the people that we have working in our city, I'm proud of our citizens, and I really don't want anybody to believe there was anything personal a while ago. I am good friends with most everybody that Ms. Moore had mentioned, and the two gentlemen mentioned names. I'm, I'm good friends, Mr. John Amerson and I were good friends. Me and Mike Bowden are good friends. I bought two lots, live in a neighborhood he developed just right up the street, done business with him over the years. I have no issue with anybody in this city, and I know sometimes people think I do, but I don't. But I have to treat everybody equal, and I have to look at what's best for our city. And once changes have been made, and once changes have been told to you that they've been made, and then you've been given two or three opportunities to, not overlook them, that's the wrong word to say, but to not have to adhere to them at that time because of your special interest that he mentioned, you'd already started a project. So therefore, you're gonna be given some time to finish a project that you've already started, and that's the only reason I can imagine that our city allowed him to have any kind of extensions. Because if it is just an idea on paper, you don't have to give him an extension. They spent no money or don't have a large investment. But up to that point, he had a large investment, so it was up to him to take advantage So it was up to him to take advantage of those opportunities of what we were allowed. And when I say we, I'm, now that I'm part of this city, uh, council of us allowing him to, uh, to take advantage of the opportunity to move further for two years at the time, two years at the time, and two years at the time, four times. And that's the only reason it, he, they, they wanted us to look a while ago like we were not doing it because of his special needs, because he had invested the money. I promise you, that's the only reason that it was allowed to happen to begin with, in my opinion, and I wasn't even here. But if I'd have been here and he didn't have that money invested, I would have not have given him extensions. He would not have needed an extension for something that didn't exist. And I don't mean that in the wrong favor and the, and the, and the wrong, the wrong way. I want to say that in the right way, that he was given times to do that for that reason. So I really do believe that, that, that the city has been fair all the way around, and I know that we have and I have, and I always will be fair with everybody that comes through that door right there. Also, want to say one other thing. September 11th, I mean, excuse me, November the 11th will be, uh, Veterans Day. Think about the veterans, the ones in the past, the ones that are serving now, and the ones that will be in the future. We're almost out of World War II veterans now, real close to getting down to the last few. And veterans that have, have done what they've done, serving our country, fought overseas, kept us safe, is why we can meet at a place like this, disagree and agree in a place like this, and have the rights that we can live in a country that is this wonderful, that everybody can vote in, that deserves to vote. So keep that in mind, and when you see a veteran, thank them so much for their service. Thank you.
Mr. Tom?
I want to say something, too. I want to address some issues, and I appreciate you all for standing up. My career, I've had a long career here, and it's, it hadn't always been where people stood up with the written rules and regulations and policies that was in place. We've also always had options for people. That's why we have a planning commission. That's why we have a boards of board. That's why I have the, the zoning adjustment situation that we have put in place, and that causes problems with our growth and certain people getting special favors years ago. A lot of these things, for that to stop is a blessing for this city, and for it's discouraging for our department people, our engineers, you know, our planning department, the people that's out there, our utility department. They, these guidelines and rules and regulations have been put in place for a reason. And as the guy pointed out, and I don't know what kind of lawyer he's supposed to be, but anyway, he made the comment of that we didn't have other people, developers, that was here. They wouldn't be here. They are waiting to see what the decision is. That's when they would show up after the decision to say, we've been treated unfairly. They don't have to come and say anything now, and I wouldn't either. But after you make a decision to give somebody something, and then in the comparison of things, I'm going to compare it to this, uh, I like to compare things sometime. Now, if someone's telling you over from 2009, going into the point that we're at now, giving you all kinds of chances to say, okay, you have disinvested. Now, you got a chance to make sure this don't turn bad on you, so you can go on and take care of the rest of it. Because I don't know how many of you all here have 401Ks, but I'm quite sure nobody didn't call you over the past couple of years when you was losing half a millions of dollars left and right because, see, it's, it's, it's a difference. He's had a chance to have no loss in any kind of manner, and still have a chance because the housing market is up to build the way, where they are, because people will buy. So nobody's trying to pick anybody out to do anything unfavorably to. It's just a matter of if we don't support the boards that are in place, don't listen to the planning commission, don't listen to the boards of board, don't listen to the department heads, we will have chaos here. And that's been a lot of different things that hadn't worked out right for this city. So I'm proud to see some consistency, since consistency came up.
You got to have it.
Want to be? You got to have it. You got to have continuity. You got everything. That's why we've moved so far from where we were, you know, in this city, and we are going to continue to grow, and we are going to continue to move, you know? And, and I appreciate that, and I thank everybody for the hard work that they're doing, and hope we can stay supporting one another, because we put a lot of things in place before we get to where we were today to prevent that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tom. I do just want to say this, based on something Mr. Bailey stated, uh, and I always have said this, Phoenix City, we're too big to be small. However, with that, everybody in this room and outside of we are connected. Everybody basically know everybody. But I will tell you this, in, in Proverbs 27:6, it says that, "Faithful of the wounds of a friend and the kisses of an enemy is deceitful." Well, our friends should appreciate us telling the truth and being consistent. That's what true friends are. Uh, it may hurt you, and you may not like it, but it's faithfulness to you because you are a true friend. And we all know a lot of people, we are all connected, but the one thing that we can ill afford to do, and, and he spoke on it very, very, very good, is our consistency in doing what's right and being consistent. And I, you know, respectfully disagree with Mr. Hargrove talking about the consistency. No, uh, we have been consistent, and, and I appreciate Mr. Bailey saying, uh, you know, our wholesomeness. And we don't always agree, and I appreciate him saying, we don't concoct, we don't get together and talk, we don't do any of that, simply because it would be unethical and it's not transparency. Regardless of what people may say, this council has been able to hang their hats on there. And so with that said, I, I, I just want to say we have a great community. We're not going to always agree, but in spite of that, we still should still love each other and not clip each other. And let's continue to be a lifter and not a leaner, and that's what we're doing. We, we, we are, uh, divinely ordered here, uh, to do a duty that is, uh, wholesome and transparency. So with that, we'd like to thank, uh, CTV Bean for always bringing this, and we certainly thank all our department head and all of our workers who are giving it their all, setting an example of what servant hood should be, and we're truly, truly grateful. Thank you all so much, and we do stand adjourned. Thank you.